All right, thank you everyone. This is a joint public hearing of the Lake County Planning Commission. I'm Anne Schneider, Director of Community Planning and Development. And I am stepping in to help out the Planning Commission this evening. We have members joining us that just may have some connection problems. I don't see Abby now. If we can give, if everyone could just be patient maybe for just one more minute. We're waiting for one more member of the Planning Commission to join us. And then we'll go ahead and start these proceedings. All right, welcome everyone. It is September 11th at four o'clock. This is a joint public hearing of the Lake County Planning Commission. Again, I'm Director Anne Schneider of Community Planning and Development. And I'm assisting the Planning Commission this evening, which is running the meeting. And we have several of our members online this evening. So first, we're just going to do a roll call of the Planning Commission members assembled. Howard Trips.
Here.
Abby Domon.
Here.
And Joey Edwards.
Here.
And may I have a roll call of Lake County Commissioners? Commissioner Mudge.
Here.
Commissioner Marcela.
Here.
And Commissioner Fiedler. Okay. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening by any member of the Planning Commission? Staff has no changes or additions. Okay, none. Moving forward, looking for an approval of the minutes for August 14th. May I get a motion for approval?
Edwards moves to approve the August 14th minutes.
And may we get a second?
I'll second, Abby.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Updates. Staff's only update, and I'll ask Bryce for updates as well. We do have a regular meeting on the 25th of September coming up where we can do perhaps some catch-up on where we are for future growth planning as we don't have an application on the file. And I think it's a good time to kind of share our communication back with the community builders and kind of where we're at on that. And then October 3rd is Gateway. Major subdivision sketch plan is set to be heard on October 3rd at four o'clock. Those overview packets have been sent out. If any member of the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners would like to schedule time to go through any of those packets with staff, please reach out anytime. There are a lot of moving parts. Again, this is the concept stage for the Gateway subdivision at the junction of Highway 91 and Highway 24. So please reach out. Staff would love to talk to you about that application. Or if you're having any problems getting into any of the files that are on Google Doc Drive. Any other updates that you have, Bryce? First, yeah, Cece, any updates? We have the RFP out right now for our short-term rental technical assistance. It closes today. And so we will be opening those proposals to look for the technical assistance on the short-term rental moratorium work. So excited to get that moving forward. I guess the other item is that we are in a fee study on land use fees and all fees associated with the department. We've onboarded that. We're also in the process of onboarding cloud permit for building permits, land use applications, and code enforcement. No old business, the new business this evening that's on the agenda are Files 2236, the Garvey Scenic Conservation Overlay Site Plan Review. And the second file is File 2304, the Lindis Land Chalk Falls CUP. So, opening the first file, File 2336, Garvey Scenic Conservation Overlay Site Plan Review. The Lake County Planning Commission will now conduct a public hearing. This statement I'm reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record of these proceedings. The Planning Commission has jurisdiction to conduct a public hearing on the site plan review under Section 3.13 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the proposed application should be approved. In considering that matter, the Commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.13.3 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be as follows. Members of the Commission will disclose any ex parte communication. The county staff will make an initial presentation. The applicant may then make their presentation. After that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the Commission. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the Chair. The applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, simply say so. The Chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and the Commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Chair of the Planning Commission or Director CPD will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. And to approve the application with no conditions. Approve the application with recommended conditions. Approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or deny the application. The Planning Director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the decision of the Commission. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the Commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will now ask that each Planning Commissioner member, if you have any ex parte communication to disclose, and if so, please disclose them now. Planning Commissioner Edwards.
None.
Planning Commissioner Howard Trips.
None.
Planning Commissioner Abby Domon.
None, sorry.
Thank you. The county staff may make its initial presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Anne. Thank you Commissioners. I appreciate everyone showing up tonight. So yeah, the first file up is File Number 23-36. It's a scenic conservation overlay site plan review for the proposed Garvey residence. And this is in the southern portion of the county, along County Road 55, next to the Arkansas River, kind of visible from Highway 24. So I will just show really quick, I just want to present some of the meat of the application here. Can you enable screen sharing? Oops, sorry, wrong. All right, so the basics of this is that the applicant is pursuing construction of a 50-foot by 75-foot steel building, 3,750 square feet in size, for a single-family residence along County Road 55 near the Arkansas River and visible from Highway 24. This property will have an onsite wastewater treatment system, so an approved septic system. It will also have a water well. Both of those have gained regulatory approval already. And interestingly, or just a little bit more novel and unique to our situation, is that this property is also going to be powered by a solar panel array, producing 60 kilowatts of energy per day roughly. It's going to have an accompanying battery storage facility and backup generator with diesel, just for redundancy on electrical power for the home. But this is kind of unique. The county does not have many, or any, that we know of, fully off-grid solar panel, solar panel-powered, single-family residences in the county. So I just want to make that clear, that we don't have the plans for the solar panel array. It's going to be a significant design and engineering phase, right? This scenic conservation overlay site plan review is just specifically dealing with the house, all right? And this allows the applicant to continue the next step, along with their building and planning and review and phases like that, and maximizing what's left of our building season this year. But I just want the Planning Commission to be aware that they will have to come back in for a separate site plan review for the solar panel array. And all the visual impacts and everything that go along with that can be addressed at that time. Okay, so this is just the house. And with that, I want to show you the proposed rendering of the house. So this is the first one. So this is the actual construction of the house. You can see that the building is 50 by 75 feet, but not the entirety of it will be a garage. You know, it's going to be split between a residential portion of it, roughly 1,200 square feet, and the balance will be indoor storage for basically a large garage. The size of this, and just based on the location of their property, which I'll go to next, you know, I can just tell you, there's no way to avoid the visual impact of any of these properties. It's just the way that they lie there. They face the highway, they have a bank that faces the highway. And so it's more just that the applicant has shown that they've taken steps to mitigate the impact. Just a moment, my Internet Explorer is not showing up. There it is. Here's the actual site plan once it loads up there. So we have the proposed building. Thing to note is that this building is designed to use the natural contours of the line, or natural contours of the landscape, rather. You guys might already have seen the building site as you're driving Highway 24. The applicant and their team have done quite a bit of the site prep already. But just to let you know that that flat spot up there on the side of the hill is where the structure is proposed to go. You have the 55-70 foot proposed building. And then this proposed solar site over here, just to kind of show you that it is incorporated in the site plan, but it's not finalized. And like I said, we'll address that a little later. The applicant did provide a version of their, the look of their home with a little bit more of the, let's see, is this working? Look, a little bit more of the natural landscape behind it for reference. Let me get that up. Okay. So let's pull that up. Sorry to switch screens so many times. All right. Here you can see a little bit more of what it's going to look like with the background of the Sawatch range behind it. So there's some elements on here that, you know, don't make it just a standard, basic gray facade, steel building. There's some aesthetic elements of the siding. You know, you have some wood elements as well. And it generally does look like a single-family residence, not just a commercial building out there. The reason that this has been brought to our attention is because it lies within the scenic conservation overlay. And I just want to go over that briefly because I know that's not something we deal with very often. But we might in the future. So I want everyone to be aware of where the scenic conservation overlay actually lies. Let me give that a minute. Okay. So on this map, in the light blue, you have little borders over certain parts of Highway 82, Highway 91, and Highway 24. In this part of the county, along the Arkansas River corridor, the scenic conservation overlay is actually within 1,000 feet of the road. The Garvey residence is to the south of Mount Massive Lakes. To the east of Panarc. And it's this little triangle here that I'm circling. Property itself. The assessor's records still have it as four, but it's actually surprisingly over eight acres. So that's really nice that they were, the surveyor found more acreage than they thought they had, which is really nice for everyone. But yeah, you can see that they're kind of on the border, but they are most certainly well within the scenic conservation overlay. So I want everyone to be aware of that. All right, and then for the rest of the presentation, I will just go back to that rendering of the house. Okay. So the property itself is zoned RC recreational, all right? It's an over-eight acre parcel. Basically, in this zone district, parcels similar to this have historically in Lake County been used for low-density, single-family residential development. And so this is well in line with historic use of properties. It's kind of on its own because it's surrounded on three sides by, or two sides by BLM, and then one side of the triangle by the river. But there are other homes along County Road 55. There's some a little bit further downstream. You might know it, there's a couple airplanes out in front of it. This property will be a lot better looking and have quite a bit of distance to the break from that property. We referred this out to Emergency Management, Public Works, Sheriff, Fire, you know, Leadville County Fire and Rescue, Parks and Wildlife, Bureau of Land Management, and Parks Recreation and Open Space. I think it's worth noting that this area has recently, or more recently, become kind of a focus area for conservation development in this county. Just further downstream on the Arkansas, we have the Arkansas River Community Preserve now. So there's some conservation efforts in this area. And the Pro's Director did respond back. He says, you know, he doesn't necessarily like that there's more building happening in this area, but they don't have any concerns. And I think just the general lay of the land and the way the parcels are interspersed, there's almost like a natural functional barrier to density of development in this area. So there won't be any houses adjacent to this one if this does end up getting approved. I do want to mention though, the one bit of feedback I got from Leadville Fire and Rescue is that they reviewed the site plans, and they just have a couple recommendations that staff is suggesting become conditions of approval for this site plan. So the first one is the address shall be visible from the road or driveway. Two, all smoke detectors installed shall be a relay system, so that if one goes off, all go off, which is good for a building this size. Three, carbon monoxide detectors shall be installed per collateral legislation. Four, garage shall have a two-hour rating, double drywall, wall slash ceiling for EV charging stations, and a smoke detector as part of the relay system. Five, the distance of this structure from the fire station will be an extended time response. Owner is strongly recommended to install a residential fire sprinkler system. Six, owner shall install a water cistern if they opt out of a residential sprinkler system. So there's kind of an either-or there. Seven, driveway shall be wide enough for a fire apparatus access, including the turn angle of the driveway. So those seven recommendations have been added in as a suggested condition of approval. And yeah, that's all staff has in this file, unless the Commissioners have any questions.
Good question. Just to clarify, the water cistern would be in the event of a fire for the fire engine to come from?
That's my assumption, correct, yeah. But that's an owner shall install if they don't do a sprinkler system. If they did the sprinkler system, the fire department is saying that their system is not required. And then I guess one other, one last aspect is, you know, the landscape is going to be revegetated as close to natural as possible. So this natural seed mix you see here in this rendering, it's basically mostly sage out there. You know, not much tree cover, but they are going to make an effort to revegetate naturally.
And that was included within the application?
Correct.
As a statement? Okay.
Will the house be perpendicular to the road or parallel to the road? So in other words, would the deck face the river? It'll, the proposed site plan has it essentially parallel to the river. So kind of, yeah, set off. I'm not sure this rendering has the correct angle on there, but I can pull up the site plan again. Thank you. All right, yeah, you can kind of see how it's parallel. That's up near the top of that ridge, would the solar be up on top? Or would it still be down the hillside? We don't have the final solar plans yet. You know, there's ways that can be addressed. It can be hidden behind the building, maybe. It can be set site. But this is, I can tell you, this isn't on the ridge line. It's set back from the ridge line, or down from the ridge line. Yeah, if you can see, there's kind of a, this is built on the 210 contour line, and the top of the property is above 250. What do we have here? Can the applicant make a comment?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna. Okay.
I just have a question.
Can you hold it to the public hearing? We're just adding, yeah. No, no problem, no problem. We'll open public hearing in just a minute. We're going to go ahead, and let me, I'm trying to figure out who I need to mute real quick.
I think it's Dave.
Okay. So we're going to, and Dave, I'll unmute you in just a minute. We're going to go ahead and introduce the applicant unless the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners have any other questions for staff. Any questions before we open it up? Okay. We're going to present the applicant, Dave Garvey, and Ally Anne Garvey as applicants. And let them go ahead and present any other information that they'd like to, that maybe Bryce just kind of tough off his presentation.
Sure. So first, I just want to say thank you so much. That was a great presentation. You said a lot of the things that I probably would have left out, so thank you very much. I'm Ally. I am going to be living in this house, along with my husband Walker. Walker's lived in Leadville for about 10 years. I've lived here four, three. I work at Lake County and Human Resources, which is really exciting. So I just wanted to emphasize our appreciation for this meeting today and hearing our plan. It's very exciting to see it all start to come together. And emphasize to you all that we also have every interest in making this look like a beautiful and well-structured home that blends in, that's not obtrusive to the road. And ideally, if folks drive by, they can be like, oh my goodness, what is that? I would want to be like, that looks like a beautiful property, I almost wish I lived there. That's our goal. That's it.
Dave, did you have anything to add to that?
I just wanted to comment a little bit on the solar site, is as you've accurately, and we start with the same feedback, Ally. Thank you so much for the consideration. We're very, very happy to have our opportunity to speak, and certainly proud of what we've proposed. We think this will be a wonderful addition to the Lake County area. Quite frankly, being a solar-powered facility, I mean, we are extremely proud that we're able to consider that and create that. It's a wonderful next step for what I think the future holds for us. And specific to the solar site is there's a bit of a natural swale where we, where we got it kind of sketched into, where we feel the solar site will be virtually on, you won't be able to see it from the highway, except from a far southern, when you're, when you're past it on the southern direction, you might be able to see a little bit up into that sail or swale and see a little bit of the solar field. But we, we think we can hide it very easily and have really good optimal support for what we want the sources to do for us. And I welcome any other questions or concerns from any of the Commissioners or participants at the, at the meeting today.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any questions for the applicants from the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners before we open public comment?
Is the cistern or the sprinkling a new request?
It is, but we do have a water tank on site because our well actually has a really low flow rate. So we have two separate water retention tanks. If, I think that we'll have to talk more with fire about it and make sure that meets the condition, but initially, it sounds like it does. And if not, we would probably move towards a sprinkler system. We thought maybe we could pull from the river. I have, I'm not sure how fire trucks work, so.
It's a lot quicker. I think that one.
The comment I would make is, I happen to come from an industry that is very familiar with fire suppression equipment. And this is new, that I, first I've heard it. But you can put a dry system in there and would be, it'd be, your fire people would be extremely familiar with a dry system, and a dry system could be a good option for consideration.
Great. Very good. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open public hearing at 4:28. And so if you would like to make comment on the file, please feel free to go ahead and raise your hand, and we'll let you speak on the record. Just, we just asked that you identify your name and your address.
I can't do that. My name's Al Phillips. My question isn't for the homeowners, because I think it's a great plan. What about the road, the county road getting there? Because that road's pretty rough. But it's the county's obligation to make sure they can get into their house without, because I know if you have a fire up there, you're going to be running heavy fire equipment over it. And I don't know, I hear they got requirements to get the fire truck into their property. What about the county road? Because that county road's pretty rough.
Good. Ally, I believe you spoke, will you know a little bit about this?
Yes. There is a history with that road. It was actually litigated up to, I believe, the Supreme Court, that the county is no longer allowed to plow that road. It is self-maintained. They have an obligation to repair it if it, if the river gets too high, which I believe they've done in the past. But right now, because the road is legally allowed to only be 12 feet wide, it cannot fit the 14-foot snowplows. But most people on that road drew, and they'll both have skid steers, and I know that they plow it. So we've gotten some, we were in talks with Public Works to see if we're allowed to maybe keep that road a little bit maintained, not necessarily process the road, but see if we could put some road base down, see if something can happen really. But for the most part, I don't think they're legally allowed to. That's my impression of it. Is that correct?
Well, that's correct. Okay. Nice.
And mine was more geared towards like summertime, because the access getting in there, because I've been in there a time or two and.
Got to have a.
Maybe in there with a heavy truck maybe soon, I don't know.
They have to get a foreraptor and take those down.
Why would you have to do that?
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, and I just wonder, because it's a county road, what the obligation is. The summertime maintenance, winter time maintenance, it is what it is, but.
No, that's a really good question. We can follow up with Public Works a little bit about that. I know the applicant has been in discussions with them, you know, just getting that vetting done, that they actually do have access, and that Public Works is willing to do that. But this road is, like you're saying, it's just so weird. It's just, it's a legislation.
Well, I understand why it's in rough shape. There's a resident down the road probably wants to keep it in rough shape where people don't travel down there, and I get that.
Yeah.
But at some point, you're going to have heavy equipment in and out there, and they already have, obviously, I've seen them in there. But you're going to, if a fire truck has to go in there, that's a pretty rough road.
Absolutely. And I think that's one of the reasons the fire department also is looking for alternative methods, like sprinkling and having a cistern on site, is because of the limitations of the access. And so that's really meant to address needing to think of some alternatives because of potential limitations to access. Any other public comment? Yes?
Given that that's mostly grass and sagebrush, if residents planted 20 or 30 aspen trees between the road and their house. that would perhaps be acceptable?
Eric, can you? Can you please ask your name? And address, please.
Uh, two-one-five Mayrow Cox Way.
Thank you. And so your question for the applicant, uh, to the Planning Commission and to the Board of County Commissioners, is there, uh, would a recommendation or a requirement for them to do some landscaping, some planting, help buffer the, uh, visual impact?
Or voluntary, not necessarily required.
Okay.
This, I guess, isn't prohibited in just what you're really asking?
Yeah.
Oh.
Not, not in our code.
Not prohibited, there's nothing prohibited?
Not prohibited, if they wanted to go above and beyond the natural revegetation and limit the visual impact, but I think that would be commended and, and acceptable, but, but at this point, you know, there's not many trees in the area, so there's not much proof or so, evidence that the trees are gonna be supported when they plant them, so it might take a while.
I know how to do it.
Yeah, I know a little bit about that.
Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. We will go ahead and close public hearing at four-thirty-three. And then we would be asking for a motion on file twenty-three dash Who's my agenda?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. From the Planning Commission.
On the conditional approval at the end, I can just add the conditions that we've been in? There should be, there's a
Is there one that has it already, this file, is that it?
Yeah, it should just have some.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so you can see here's some conditions, and then this is the
These are the additional conditions.
These are the findings that need to be made.
Just for site.
So you'll see the approval here has
Gotcha.
So you'll just want to do, if you want, if you want the conditions of approval that are listed, then they'll just read.
Understood, I just didn't know if we needed to include the water. This is
Oh, yeah.
System.
Oh, yeah, if you
Um, they are included in one of the conditions that says that all LLC of our recommendations
Yeah, so it's just a
Yeah, just to refer back to those, but thank you.
Edwards moves, the Planning Commission approved file twenty-three dash thirty-six, the Garvey SEO site plan review, subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant shall have a site plan review for the planned solar power system for this single-family residence. Number two, all outdoor lighting should be dark sky compliant. Number three, applicant will abide by Leadville Lake County Fire and Rescue's plan review recommendations. And number four, all representations made by the applicant in his application and in hearing, uh, and in hearing shall be considered as conditions of approval. In further finding that, number one, the proposed site plan can be found consistent with the goals, objectives and policies contained in the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Number two, the proposed site plan conforms to the requirements and provisions of this code. Number three, the proposed site plan adequately addresses the submittal requirement items. Number four, the proposed site plan as conditioned is consistent with and in harmony with neighboring land use and future intended land uses in the area. And number five, the proposed site plan is substantially in compliance with the requirements and provisions of section six-point-one-five design criteria.
Do we have a mo, a second on the motion?
Let's make a second to that motion.
Thank you, Planning Commissioner Tritts. We will now do roll call on the motion. Edwards?
Yes.
Oh.
Does the commissioners have to?
No, this is just planning.
Right, sorry.
No, you guys can stay. It's planning commission, it, it's just site plan.
Oh, right.
You guys don't, you don't, you don't do this one. That's why we did it first. Okay, so I'm so sorry, first, any, any discussion on the motion?
None for me.
Thank you.
None for Tritts.
Okay, roll call on the motion for conditional approval. Edwards?
Yes.
Tritts?
Yes.
Domon?
Yes.
Um, file twenty-two thirty-six receives conditional approval on September eleven. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, so we do need, moving on to the conditional use permit application that we're here for today. This is file twenty-three dash zero-four, the Lindis Land Chalk Falls Conditional Use Permit. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I'm reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a conditional use permit application under section three-point-six-point-one of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the conditional use permit should be approved. In considering that matter, the Commission will address the approval criteria set forth in section three-point-six-point-one-F of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be as follows. Members of the Commission and or Board will disclose any ex parte communication. The county staff will make an initial presentation, the applicant may then make their presentation. After that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the Commission and the Board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the Chair. The applicant may then proceed any rebuttal, with any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made a point that you wish to make, simply say so. The Chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the Board, and that there is no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and the Commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting, and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. Approve the condition with no, approve the application with no conditions, approve the application with the recommended conditions, approve the application with newly identified conditions, or deny the application. The Planning Director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the Commission. The Commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the Commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will now ask that each Planning Commissioner member and then each County Commissioner, if you have any ex parte communication to disclose, and if so, please disclose it now. Planning Commissioner Howard Tritts?
Yes, none.
Planning Commissioner Abby Domon?
None.
Planning Commissioner Joey Edwards?
None.
County Commissioner Sarah Mudge?
None.
County Commissioner Kayla Marcella?
None.
Thank you. The county staff, please go ahead and make the initial presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Alright, so this is, uh, file twenty-three dash oh-four for an outfitter and guide, um, conditional use permit at the Chalk Falls Ice Climbing Area. So you might remember this file kind of popping up on our Planning Commission agendas towards the beginning of the year. And it eventually actually fell off the agendas because we were looking for more feedback from CDOT on access concerns. So I feel like we've adequately addressed those, uh, those concerns, or at least addressed CDOT's issues. I'd like to thank Mr. Conrad Lindis, he's the managing member of Lindis Land LLC, he's here with us today, and that's the owner of this piece of land. It's interesting to note that this piece of land has been used for ice climbing operations for several years. And the owner just wasn't aware that he needed a CUP. Once he was made aware by a member of the public that he needed a CUP, he's been more than willing to come in and help us with this process and, and go through this application process, so I really appreciate your, your help, Mr. Lindis. For everyone's familiarity, I would just want to start off with just showing you where this actually lies. So this conditional use permit, um, is for an out, is for a guiding operation only. There's not going to be any permanent structures proposed or required for this operation, or any permanent facilities of any kind. They're utilizing a natural ice formation that happens on Chalk Creek Falls every winter. Because of the angle of the sun, it is actually really protected, really cold, makes for a great and well-known ice climbing formation. So the location of this, you know, if we have Leadville down here, you go up ninety-one, and as you're kind of at that mile marker eight bend, starting to head up the hill towards Fremont Pass, you pass by a pretty well-known and well-used winter recreation area, it's actually a CDOT, um, pull-off here. And that is your access to the Par Robinson Placer, which also, right here in this little formation, that's where Chalk Creek Falls actually lies. Right there, so it just has a little sun protection. But yeah, like I said, several guiding companies have used this, Colorado Mountain College has used this for guided ice climbing. And then Mr. Lindis, he also works with organizations that help out, you know, um, disabled climbers and giving, and giving some people that don't necessarily have access to the outdoors, uh, or the same access to the outdoors, a good opportunity to do something really adventurous and really fun. Before he was made aware that he needed a CUP though, he did, uh, Mr. Lindis and his organization did go through the process of meeting with a lawyer, I think they met with Rocky Mountain General Practice. And they actually created a set of rules that they make every operator abide by to have permission. This is before the CUP, so in prior seasons, they've actually made operators go by these rules, so let me pull that up, it's really informative. So if you can see, this was found in the applicant's submittal, but also I've included in the staff report just, um, the list of standards that need to be addressed in this peer review evaluation. This peer review evaluation, the owners require this to be filled out by every operator every year, and it must be filled out to meet the family's satisfaction, or the landowner's satisfaction, so you can see how thorough it is though. Provide proof of liability insurance. All guides must have at least a first aid and CPR. At least one guide must have at a minimum Level One Avon certification for winter programming, which is really relevant in ice climbing. Each new applicant must also answer the following questions. Do you have any permits with any other group or agency? Do you have any history of runs with those group or agencies, and have any of your permits ever been revoked, denied, suspended, under question? Have you ever had any charges, or have you got any court actions against this? And then just a general narrative, they want to see how the employees will run the activity at Chalk Falls. You know, describing the technical training and what all is involved, what their staff can provide, and also what they're, you know, going to require from the guests. What is a normal ratio of guests to guides? And then really importantly, because this doesn't have any facilities out there, sanitary or otherwise, how are you going to manage sanitation, including trash and human waste? These, how you will collaborate with other organizations that are using the falls, really important, because it's a limited resource. Accident preventing, prevention protocols, what equipment they're gonna have for first aid, external communication if they don't have cellphone service. So they've really done a thorough job, and you can tell this was made with a lawyer's advice, because it, it covers a lot of the gaps. You know, staff would like to see if the CUP is approved by the Planning Commission, staff would like to see those standards memorialized as a condition. This piece of land is zoned agricultural forestry. It's bordered to the south by Highway ninety-one, on all other directions except for a little sliver, it's bordered by public land, BLM. And then adjacent to the property to the northeast is the Climax Revival Special Event Facility, that just earlier this year got permission to have a special event facility up there. And this application was coming in, it doesn't use the same access, but it's a similar area, and they're the only things out there. And so that was part of the reason that this went to CDOT review, is that the applications were kind of being conflated a little bit, kind of confused with one another, so it was really nice to get the Climax Revival Special Event Facility out of the way. They're already all on their way to satisfying conditions, and now we can talk about the Chalk Creek Falls Ice Climbing on its own. Interestingly, with the, you can see, as part of this vetting of this application, uh, the applicant did consult with the traffic engineer. And the traffic engineer consulted with CDOT. And essentially, they determined that a CDOT access permit is not needed because the pull-out area, which is in the highway right of way, adjacent to the Lindis parcel slash incorporating part of the Lindis parcel, is the only access point. They're not, they don't need a CDOT access permit, or this is what CDOT is saying, because they're not accessing the parcel through any other parcels or roadways or whatever, they're actually directly pulling off of the highway. Now, the parking situation out there with the snowmobilers, that's gonna be need to address, uh, be addressed on a local side of things, right, with our Sheriff's Department, and making sure that they're not blocking access to the highway, or preventing orderly traffic going down that road, as I've seen. But that's not necessarily to do with the ice climbing events, that's what it do with the private snowmobilers. What was happening is that there is a natural gas pipeline easement that connected that right-of-way pull-off area with the Forest Service Road just to the north. That access easement was not for a road, it wasn't for anybody to be used, it was just for the natural gas easement, so that's actually been blocked off as part of the Climax Revival CDOT access permit. And what that does is that has prevented some of CDOT's concerns, or, you know, gotten rid of some of CDOT's concerns with the pull-off area being used for parking. Alright, so, um, you know, we'd encourage, it sounds like the applicant in the past, their operators have used shuttles, and we'd encourage that less vehicles is better in this, this area. But the snow storage pull-out used for vehicle parking by guests and participants using the ice climbing, but they're not needed to get a CDOT access permit. So that was really good to clear up and talk to CDOT about, and sounds like it's, kind of lives in the land of nuance, but, uh, it works out of the applicant's favor. One thing that does, because they're parking in that little pull-off though, they do need to most likely cross into a little bit of that public land to access the falls from the parking area. Alright, so we, I talked to BLM, because they're the jurisdiction out there, and they said, they were notified about it, but this doesn't cross their threshold for meeting a special recreation permit. They have what's called a letter of agreement, it's just a handshake agreement with owners saying, we're aware that there might be some incidental uses of BLM land to get from point A to point B. Standard for that is usually less than a mile. This application most certainly will never be using BLM land or, you know, anywhere near close to a mile. But, um, one of the conditions of approval staff is recommending is that the applicant pursue this letter of agreement and furnish a copy to CPD, just so that we have it, and just so that we know that BLM is aware. But it sounds like it's not a burdensome process, there's no, uh, it's not legally binding or anything like that, it's just more of an awareness thing. Let's see, no food is currently provided, um, you know, that would be a separate element of their application that they would have to get vetted through another agency, so just to be aware. And then the other thing I addressed in the conditions is we just want to memorialize that there is some sort of sanitary consideration brought out, right? So it needs to be a wag bag or some other ability to waste in the can and it being hauled off-site and doesn't become part of the environment. We refer this to a lot of agencies, uh, Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue, Sheriff's Office, Public Works, Emergency Management, BLM, Public Health, CDOT, CDPHE, Environmental Health, Parks and Wildlife and Forest Service. And we got some feedback, uh, I thought was very valuable, from Emergency Director Claire Skeen. And she just said that she doesn't have any concerns with the application and appreciates it, she has any concerns because the applicant has already taken so much time and care to have this vetting process already. So she sees no increased risk beyond what is inherent with winter backcountry travel and ice climbing, given that the Lindis, uh, Lindis Land is requiring such a thorough process from guiding companies. BLM, like we said, with the, they want the letter of agreement, and CDOT is maybe more aware of our current local situation with the snowmobiles up there, but they didn't have any concerns or require a permit for this application. Alright. So I think this fits in really well, and, you know, addresses, um, the applicant has responded that this has a lot of support in the Comprehensive Plan, the two thousand and fifteen Comprehensive Plan. Right, it capitalizes on our high elevation environment, something that Lake County offers that's unique and special because we have the elevation, because we have the cold, and now we can use that to our advantage with something that Lake County offers that's unique and special, because we have the elevation, because we have the cold, and now we can use that to our advantage with uses like this. It includes just that outdoor, high-altitude training and outdoor recreation economy, and, and caters to that, that kind of economy, uh, we're, we're moving towards. And increasingly, County has a destination for where sports activities beyond, um, just skiing and other, you know, more common ones. There's not gonna be any added demand on any, um, public facilities. And, the other thing that's really interesting is that for years, this was, there was a lot of mapping discrepancies. Mr. Lindis actually went out and, got a surveyor to put in a new survey of this land, because the BLM, according to their official maps, until I was sending them the corrective info, the BLM was under the assumption that this was on their land, right? It was just one of those areas where the borders were a little bit messed up, or, you know, where, especially with a skinny parcel like this, that hundred feet really made a big difference. So we do have the survey, we know this is on private land, and now what we can do, and what Mr. Lindis's vetting process can do, is just prevent, you know, unsavory or, uh, bad use of the, the land, the landscape, and impactful use of the landscape. Let's see. Just a few suggested motions that I just wanna go through, is that all operators and guide services shall be licensed by the state of Colorado, right? Provide that liability insurance that the landowners are already providing. And just some of these, the more, um, really important standards, like the guide-to-guest ratio, that level minimum, that Level One Avalanche Certification, the minimum standards, sanitary waste disposal. Um, and then this one here, which is no more than eight vehicles shall park and utilize the site at any given time. Guide services and operators are encouraged to shuttle clients, guides, and other participants to the site. So this is just to not add to the traffic and the, the parking problem up there. And, um, I can pass it over to Mr. Lindis if you have anything to say.
Just, just briefly, um, as you have pointed out, um, the public has been using this land and climbing on the falls for, decades at least. What we're proposing is to bring at least part of that activity into, uh, compliance with these safety standards and, and legal access to the property. We've put no trespassing signs up there, but they typically get ignored, especially by local people who, have, for generations, thought that it was BLM land. So I don't think there's gonna be any parking or any activity on the land that hasn't already happened through public use. We're just, uh, making an attempt to bring it into compliance with, with safety standards and, and legal performance.
Thank you, Mr. Lindis. Um, are there any questions from the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners for either staff or the applicant?
Do I understand that, sorry, do I understand that the Sheriff's Department said that they would assist in, in, uh, managing the parking area for access? I've not, the Sheriff's Office did not respond to the application, but we would probably follow up with them. They did not, CDOT says. CDOT says they have to, but the Sheriff's Department hasn't. CDOT says we're, that's not our issue. Gotcha. Parking and stuff. That's a local issue with local law enforcement.
Fritz here. Um, Mr. Lindis, my question is, I, I'm familiar with that area pretty much, and the falls up in that area. But is this also historically known as Rainbow Falls, rather than Chalk Falls? Uh, I hit, when I put all the pictures up in the courthouse, and also down at the, uh, senior center, I hit an eight-by-seventeen picture of Rainbow Falls. It was, um, the canyon was bridged by the railroad, and water and, do you know the answer to that question?
It's probably the same one, because yeah, right at the falls is where there was an old railroad crossing, correct?
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I've never heard that name for it, but I, but again, it matches the description.
Any other, um, questions for, before we open this up to public hearing, for either, um, staff or Mr. Lindis? Okay, oh Kayla. Yes, Kayla.
Yeah, thanks, Anne. Um, and I'm sorry if you can't hear me very well. I don't have super great, uh, connection. Um, I, I just was wanting to follow up on, uh, the comment just now about the, the public utilizing this location, um, and having the CUP in, in, uh, in place potentially. Um, is there any kind of signage requirement or notification of the public, uh, that this will be used with an outfitter or guide, or is there a process to, either encourage or discourage, uh, public use of the, of the property with the outfitter and guide, um, CUP in place?
It's a good question. I know, like Mr. Lindis has said, they've put up no trespassing signs in the past, and they've been kind of taken down, but I think, he plans on putting new, no trespassing signs up, and, um, not sure, probably an outfitter and guide specific one would be nice. But I think what could really help is just a general awareness of what's actually going on here, right? Getting rid of that discrepancy between what is BLM-owned and what is privately owned, you know, having more accurate maps. And, um, and this, this public hearing process that we can point to it, you know, will inform the member of the public that was really concerned and wanted to see the CUP take place, or be put into place, will inform them, and hopefully they can start disseminating there. But, um, that's worth, worth considering, you know, how we spread the awareness of this. And.
Yeah, I just, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lindis. Um, I just think that, you know, with, with kind of the lessons learned that we had going through the, um, process with the Trail One Hundred Race and the private property considerations with that special event permit, that it's worthwhile to just talk about, about that in, in this area, um, to make sure everybody's aware of that. So I apologize for cutting you off, and, and thank you for being proactive. I do appreciate that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that occasionally, when the guides are there, they'll, they will, uh, encounter, the public on the property and inform the, these public people that it is private property, and they don't have permission to be there. So, um, you know, that's a course of one-by-one, uh, factor, but it, something is being done also.
Great, thank you guys. That's the only, uh, que, only question or consideration that I had.
I think that answered my question.
Okay. Um, hearing no more questions from the Planning Commission or the Board, Board of County Commissioners, we'll go ahead and open this public hearing at five o'clock. Are there any members of the, of the public here with us today that would like to make, um, public comment on the Lindis, uh, land Chalk Falls CUP application? Okay, Tom?
This is the conditional use permit, Tom Phillips. Um, is that for wintertime use only, or is that year-round? Because I know that area is pretty popular, people hiking up in the summertime, looking at the falls. I can understand not having people up there when you've got your guide service up there, doing your ice climbing and all that kind of stuff in the winter, but what about the summertime?
So this CUP is for outfitting and guiding specifically regarding the ice climbing operation.
Okay.
Right, yeah. The CUP can cover a whole bunch of different things in year-round operations, but this one is pretty limited, to just talking about that, yeah, guided ice climbing.
And is the owner amenable to people hiking there in the summertime, or is he wanting them completely off, or?
You can ask that.
Um, given, especially around the falls, uh, the people that go up, and look like, look over the edge of the falls, that's kind of a dangerous place up there, and I would, I would prefer that the public, uh, didn't use the property, but, uh, other than putting up signs, I have no way of preventing it from happening.
Okay.
And I've got another comment on the parking issue. Um, typically, I'm snowmobiled up there, um, it's about fifty-fifty snowmobile skiers. And my experience has been, everybody's been pretty cordial to everybody. The road that the gas line goes up, that, is that not available anymore for a snowmobile skier access?
Correct.
So then we go up and we ride along the road, and then use the original road that comes up around.
Probably.
Okay, and, cause there's a big thing out there that everybody wants to shut it down, the snowmobiles, and this, that, and the other, and, so I think there's some misinformation out there that maybe needs to be addressed, that if we can't use that access, we can go up alongside the road, and then access the Forest Service Road up above where?
Yes.
The old road.
Right.
That's what CDOT has said. Where, where to close that, that unauthorized, uh, road that follows the gas line and access, uh, to go up that, that valley is from the, on the Forest Service Road. Or it goes in for snowmobiles, I guess.
Correct, so that's, as, as far as our, our assumption, CDOT is not saying they don't, they're not allowing parking there. They say that it, it becoming a problem. But that is the legal access to that trail network, is that road that actually goes up there.
Okay. And, and then the parking, you mentioned that they only had six parking spots available or whatever. That's always kind of a first come, first served.
True.
I mean, and I don't know how that's gonna work, cause I know some of the snowmobiling population can get a little upsetty spaghetti. And some of the skiers can too, but, I mean, something to be done to make, you know, it is a pretty big rec area.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, I think a lot of it, we're, we're, the suggested condition is that a maximum of eight vehicles, but also a suggestion to shuttle as much as they can. But it's gonna take some cordial, you know, actually being, nice to each other on the ground to make it all work too.
Well, hopefully that's working. It seemed to have been working in the, in, in the year passed, this last year, so, uh, seems like everybody's getting along. I just, okay?
Yep.
Any other members of the public? Eric?
I'm delighted that the trash is going to be removed from the site. Some of it could go into landfill, some of it could be recycled, some of it can't go to either place, especially human waste. Um, would it be appropriate to not only ask them to remove the waste, but define what they do with it after they get it off the site?
So, that's a good question. I believe wag bags are actually, they have an enzyme in them, which do biodegrades the poop to make it suitable to go into a landfill. So that's one thing. And then the other sanitary waste disposal methods would be, you know, just coming from my guiding experience, like there are actual bucket toilet systems that are designed to be dumped right at the, the waste station, so. Yeah, I think with wag bags or the other, I think they're gonna use the bucket system.
A pit that can be dumped, perhaps?
There, no, no, no pit on site.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. They gotta be able to take it out with them. Right, cause they're not proposing any facilities being constructed.
So you're, you're thinking that's a requirement that's already built into the conditions?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, because, because they don't have permission to build any other facilities, like a pit toilet, that would require a separate process.
Yeah, the general public, I guess, would.
Probably use it as much as they could, or break up the logs if they, yeah. So, no, probably best to just address it by, you know, because also this is such a, seasonal temporary use. It makes sense to haul it in.
Glad you started by.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. We will go ahead and close the public hearing at five oh six. And look forward to entertain a motion from the Planning Commission on file twenty-three oh four.
Edwards moves that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners of file twenty-three dash zero.
Um, okay, thanks, Sarah. Kayla, we'll go ahead and.
Thank you.
A conditional use permit application for the outfitter and guide of the number thirty-seven ninety-two Par Robinson Placer, located at section sixteen, township eight south, range seventy-nine west pursuant to the standards of section five point two point twenty-three outfitter and guide. Further finding that the approval criteria pursuant to Lake County Land Development Code, section three point six point one F, have been met as evidenced in the staff report dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, for file number twenty-three dash zero four. The conditions for approval are, number one, all operators and guide services shall be licensed by the state of Colorado and provide proof of liability insurance. Number two, operators and guide services that shall provide at least one staff member for each six clients or guest participants, and carry first aid supplies adequate for the group size. Number three, at least one instructor guide must have at a minimum a Level One Avalanche Certification for Winter Programming. Number four, at a minimum, all guides and instructors must have met current certifications in first aid and CPR. Number five, all operators must carry wag bags or other methods of sanitary waste disposal, and haul off any trash produced during the ice climbing activities. Number six, a BLM letter of agreement must be acquired by the applicant to make the BLM aware of the intended incidental use of the BLM-administered property. Number seven, no more than eight vehicles shall park and utilize the site at any given time. Guide services and operators are encouraged to shuttle clients, guides, or other participants to the site. And number eight, all representations made in the application and in the hearing should be considered as conditions of approval.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Let's use a second.
Any discussion on the motion?
None for me.
None.
Okay, we will take a roll call on the motion on the table. Howard, Triggs?
Hi.
Abby Domon?
Yes.
And Joey Edwards?
Yes.
Very good. The conditional approval of file twenty-three oh four will be recommended to the Board of County Commissioners. Um.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the thoroughness with which this process took place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindis. Thanks for hanging with us and getting all the stuff done that was required by others, so appreciate it.
Thank you all. Can we get a motion for adjournment, unless there's anything else that Planning Commission would like to share with us this evening?
I'd make the motion that we adjourn.
We're doing seconds.
Number seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Really appreciate you coming and making this able to take place.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Feel better, Howard.
See y'all later.
Thank you.
See you, Howard.